Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January 18th, 2011. It's 9:00 a.m. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nance.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember DiStefano.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the January 4th City Council meeting and the January 11th City Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes be approved.
Second.
Moved in second. Are all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, resolution approving the purchase of two replacement vehicles as approved in the 2010-2011 fleet budget. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council.
Wait, no proclamations. What's wrong with this picture?
You've been doing so many lately, you got ahead, so we'll...
Get a reprieve.
Yeah. All right, buying vehicles is always one of those issues in this community that people ask questions about. During budget time, when we discuss our fleet maintenance program, we kind of go over a lot of details, and then when it comes time to actually purchasing the vehicles, many times it looks like it's done with not a whole lot of thought. So I've asked Richard to kind of go over the program of our fleet maintenance replacement program this year because it is an ongoing program. Also, just for the people who may not know, we have a fleet maintenance fund. It is actually a account that every year we place dollars into to make sure that we have the cash necessary to purchase the replacement vehicles as needed. Then we try to, well, we monitor the program and don't always buy the vehicles just because it said, "Okay, in five years, seven years, whatever the date is, it is time to replace a vehicle." We actually have our mechanics determine whether or not the vehicle is at that point in its age and wear and tear that needs to be replaced. And so we do that each year. And all the replacement vehicles come out of this fund, and this fund is, once again, like a savings account, so we have cash and don't have to take it out of the general fund or other operating funds and have that hit every year. Do want to stress this year, because of reduction in staff, and particularly the field inspectors that we have, we reduce the number of pickups because that's always a big topic, how many pickups you have out there. We've actually, this year, all of those that were scheduled to be replaced, we didn't replace them, we just put them in surplus, and we'll sell them in our surplus process. All right, enough of background. Now, Richard's going to talk a little bit about the details of our replacement program this year, which is really very small, only two pieces of rolling stock this year. Richard?
Thank you. That's correct. We have initially the plan called for 30 vehicles to be replaced this year, and on reassessing all those vehicles, we've determined that we can get by with all of those except two of them really need to be replaced. The F-350 utility body, basically, it's our oldest truck in the utility maintenance fleet. It's not a pickup truck, it's a one-ton. And then the old Impala that is in the fire department, and we're going to get rid of the Impala and replace it with a minivan that would be much more versatile. All of these other vehicles, we've been through them and have determined that they'll get us through another year at least relative to the reorg and the layoffs and the remaining vehicles. There's seven pickup trucks that are excess as a result of that. We will be replacing or sending to auction seven pickup trucks, but they'll be our worst seven. So we're currently assessing which ones will be the worst seven that will go to auction, and the seven from the reorg will be replacing those that go to auction.
Council questions?
Richard, did we invite Palm Coast Ford and Flagler Chrysler to bid?
Yes.
They didn't come back, or they just couldn't make the bid?
They are, historically, the local dealers cannot compete with the state contract. We always give them the opportunity, especially when you're talking about the kind of fleet that they handle. Typically, they won't handle one tons and larger, so they won't typically bid on those anyway. But the last few years, we've given the local guys the opportunity, and they have declined.
Mr. Lewis.
Richard, this is a Ford on the, this is a Ford 350. I would assume the Ford 350 is just as good as the Ford 150 in terms of truck utility. But what is the lifespan of a utility truck like this in your fleet?
Well, as you can see, this one is a 2003.
Right.
So five to seven years, seven years probably pushing it. Depends on how much it get used. You know, all the vehicles get used for different purposes. This is a one-ton, so it's not a pickup truck. It's the ones with the utility, the box on the back and the dual wheels, and so they're pretty heavy-duty, and they do pull trailers sometimes, and sometimes they get loaded up pretty heavily with materials and supplies. So it all depends on how it's used. If it's a pickup truck that all he's doing is doing inspection routes and not nearly as much wear and tear as a one-ton that's pulling a trailer, or like a meter-reader vehicle that stop and go, stop and go, with those things don't last long at all. So it all depends on its use.
What determines your selection as opposed to what should be replaced and what should not be replaced?
The condition is assessed. We first get, we ask the division managers to give us the, give the fleet department their opinion of which of their vehicles need to be replaced. And then we get the mechanic, our in-house mechanic, also assesses the vehicles and actually makes the final determination based on its condition.
Is mileage a consideration?
Mileage is a consideration, but it really isn't a, isn't an indicator. It's all about the condition.
Condition.
Because if you have, you know, you could easily have 150,000 miles if it's highway miles, or you take a meter-reader vehicle and probably you get 100,000 miles out of one of those, but the doors are falling off, so...
Other council questions? Seeing none, let's open the meeting to the public, getting from the public, wish to be heard on agenda item number two.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I noticed the, most of your vehicles are Ford makers. Do we get any kind of a discount when we order from Ford like that?
We'll get an answer for you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
I have few concern. I don't know if this is the time to...
If it's about the purchase of trucks, this is the right time. If it's not about the purchase of trucks...
No, it's about different things.
Then in a few minutes, we'll have public comments. Thank you. Seeing no one else approach the podium, we close the public portion of the meeting. Come back to City Council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Will to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection.
Mayor, you want to answer Jack's question?
Yes, please.
I can do that, I think.
Discount because we've got a bunch of Fords.
Yeah, it's, that's one of the benefits of actually taking it off the state contract. It is a fleet, so it's, the discount comes from the purchasing power that's statewide for all cities, counties, et cetera. So there's definitely a significant discount with staying with those statewide contracts in this case. That's why the local dealerships cannot compete is because they buy these in bulk. I also want to stress that they're stripped down. The other thing that happens with the local dealership is, is there's certain things that the general consumer is going to want in a vehicle, but these fleet vehicles lots of times don't have those little extra creature comforts that reduces the cost, too. When they buy bulk, they can do that, but the dealership can't just go out and buy one of those costs efficiently just for us. So that's how the price really makes a difference.
Think the other part, by the way, isn't there a competition on the state contract where they go to Chevy, to Ford, to Chrysler, everybody's included, and they all offer their best bulk deal for stripped-down vehicles? And in this case, for this contract, Ford came out on top.
Even though we did things in reverse order, we did approve agenda item number two. This brings us to the consent agenda items number three through seven. Richard, as long as you're still sitting there, a question was asked of me on agenda item number four. Why, you know, in a swale rehab, why are we using culvert pipe and what kind?
Well, if during, as part of the 25-mile swale rehab program, if we dig up an existing driveway because the elevation of that driveway culvert is not correct, then we will replace that culvert.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to remove any of the agenda items in numbers three through seven?
Oddly enough, no.
Seeing none? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the consent items as presented.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. Ma'am, now's your opportunity. Please give us your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Rohengiz A. Polk. Any other information?
That's fine.
I live in Palm Coast.
Thank you.
The first question is the lights. I would like to put it in that if it's possible, they put timer, which a lot of town, they have it. So it tells us it's 22nd, 1918, so we're ready to stop because this is causing a lot of accident. And actually, we are driving really like not relaxed because I don't know when the light is going to change, I'm going to get ticket and all this. I think we're spending a lot of money in this town. I think we should spend some on that and change at least few intersection. Another thing is, we're talking about, we need the city hall for $10 million. I think we're paying too much tax already. There is a place, European Village, is already ready and is a beautiful place. I can even talk to the owners, if it's possible, we can get it less than half-price. I have one question about these, all these trucks that we bought for the workers. Why we need that many trucks? I see they wanted to fix like one little hole in the street, three or four trucks is there. First of all, they can share and get in one. And I see them like they're having sandwiches, relaxing in my money, on my money. I don't think we have that much budget, or we do have, I don't know about it. And they take the trucks home. I used to work in New Jersey for state. We never had to take the truck home because I personally don't want to pay tax for people take my money, my gas, and my truck home and use it for their own purposes. And these are the most important, and I have a lot more, hopefully, next time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. This is about Bel Air and Whiteview Parkway heading east. When are they going to start putting in a walkway or along there, heading east towards I see it's marked and everything, and people are asking me in the area, "When are they going to put a walkway here where we can walk instead of walking on the grass?" That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get you an answer. Next speaker.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I was reading in the paper about they're going to institute another quarter of percent sales tax, right? For Flagler 100, or whatever they are. I'd just like to know, are you going to go at least say nothing about it? Now, I was reading in the paper that the commission, county commission, they give to the Flagler County, Flagler 100, a little bit over $1 million. And we match them with a little bit more than the county gives. The way I look at it, we're paying double. If the county gives them $1 million three, and we give them $1 million five, that means we're giving the county over $2 million. Because the money I give you, you give to the county, and the county gives it back. So it's the same with that, the old police department, right? We're doubling. So what I say is, they're going to give money to Flagler Enterprise, let them get their money, which is my money, and let's just recline from giving anything, just say, "No, you got my money, that use it." Because they're still using it anyway. It's double our taxes, and I believe we should say no to Flagler Enterprise.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You all look very serious. I'm Steve McLaughlin. I'm a Palm Coast resident. I'd like to thank the city manager, Mr. Landon, for sending me some information on the no-smoking sign that was put up in the dog park. And as a result of the sign, we've had a little discussion for people in the park. I attended a meeting about two and a half years ago about improvements that were going to be done to the park. They were supposed to start in the following year, and nothing's been done so far. So we're a little concerned about this. They'd have to tell me that. Supposedly, they did have the money, though. The people in the park are a little concerned, and they'd like to have some following improvements, a walkway from the gate to the pavilion for elderly and handicapped. We do have elderly people coming in, and we have some handicapped people. Some of them can't get to the bottom of the park. They basically have to come in the gate and almost stop within, you know, 50 feet of the gate. We were told we were going to have lights even before this meeting on improvements at the top of the park and the bottom of the park. The light at the top doesn't work anymore, and there's never been a light put at the bottom. So we'd like to get that. We'd like to have some maintenance on the park besides just coming in and blowing the dust around with the lawnmowers. The grass is getting thinner and thinner. It's just kind of a mess. I've got a kind of light-colored apricot dog, and every time I take her down there, I've got to bathe her after that because she has turned gray. It's just nothing but dirt. We'd also like to have a designated smoking area because of the no-smoking sign. There are people that come down and smoke. I saw the complaint that they filed, and the person didn't say that the smoke bothered him in any physical way, he just said he found it offensive. I find it offensive that people don't pick up after their dogs. If you confront them, you can almost get into a battle over it, so it kind of goes its merry way. The city doesn't do too much about that. Nobody comes in to enforce the code about picking up dog poop, but they evidently are going to do it about smoking. And as I asked Mr. Landon in the beginning, why was this one area in all of Palm Coast designated as no-smoking? And I found out somebody complained, and they have a right to do that. I'm not opposing that, but a designated smoking area would be nice. We also think all dogs you have are the rabies tags on their collar and their license, which is not the case. So you don't know whether a dog's been treated or not, you know, been taken care of. We do have a few people that have brought in aggressive dogs, and you can get into a fight over that when you tell them your dog's too aggressive, you know, "We think you ought to leave the park." We've had to call the police a couple times for that. It's not something I really want to get into confrontation over.
15 seconds, sir.
Okay. We know puppies should be allowed in the park until they meet their shots, and we'd like to have a representative from Animal Control should come to the dog park to show people how to pick up after their dogs. I know that's a kind of a simple request, but, and we're going to probably start a petition about this and bring it to the City Council. That shouldn't be a problem, should it?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning also. My name is Susan Jones. I'm a taxpayer and resident. I came here also in regards to the no-smoking sign. It just befuddled me that in this economic time, that such a letter, or one letter from one citizen will make such an impact on Mr. Landon that we would take the money and time to post no-smoking signs. And I'm sure that it's not going to be just no-smoking in James Holland. I would think if you're going to designate one city park and recreation, you're going to have to spend the money to make all our trails, all our preserves, and all our state parks in compliance also. Where I don't understand is where the ordinance that was posted clearly states that the city has the right, I believe, to designate what they want as non-smoking and what they want as smoking. So I would even ask that you take the no-smoking sign down out of the dog park and just designate one area in the dog park, maybe the pavilion, as a no-smoking area. And, I mean, it's money spent that we can spend elsewhere. As you just listened to Steve speak, our dog park is depleted. According to your 2008 master plan, these issues were addressed then. Accessibility, under the ADA law, you should have accessibility, every private citizen should. We don't. Our seniors cannot. I've had three letters so far of seniors falling in that dog park. They can't access it. We addressed in our master plan, we said that this was a problem, and we have not come up. If we're going to spend money, let's spend money on doing improvements that make it accessible to all individuals under ADA, not on non-smoking because one citizen complained. That's an expense I don't see. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name, excuse me, my name is Bill Fitten. I've been in this community for 25 years, and I've seen the wonderful improvements in that time throughout the city, and I'm proud of the city. Except for the dog park, I don't know what, why people can't come there and enjoy it and have a nice time. I come there, and all it is is dirt and sand, and as I approach it with my car, there's just that one area where you go by the dog park, the restroom where the pavement ends, and then it begins again up there, the closets. And you can't bring your car there without getting filthy. You can't walk your dog there without the dog, bring him home, and have to wash him every day, which is not a problem, but you come down there. I don't mind the non-smoking. I think that's a good idea. Your new rules are very fine, but there isn't any improvement on the park itself. The dirt and, and I've found that people have given up picking up after their dogs. I first started in with my Husky, and I clean up after her. That's what she likes, anyway. Right away, that's what she does, and I know, I watch her, I clean it up. But then, there's eight more. I picked up eight more that people just have given up because they see the park, how, what a bad condition it is, and so I don't want to go out of this community. First of all, I can't afford it with the gas, and, but there is a park way down in Flagler Beach with a pool and everything, but I don't want to do that. I want my community, I want to be proud of the dog park. And I guess that's about it. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. But first, Mr. Landon, let's see. Countdown timers on traffic lights, where I've seen them been on for the pedestrian crosswalk as opposed to a countdown for the amber or red.
Yes, in fact, that's our new standard, all the new ones for pedestrians, you do see that countdown. I have heard of them. I don't know if I've ever seen one that it does a countdown so you know that it's going to turn yellow within so many seconds. I don't, I'm not prepared to address as to how feasible that is and what that would take, and that's a new one on me.
Well, wasn't part of the rest of the question there, that by not having it there, it's causing more accidents? I'm not aware of, in reading the sheriff's reports, that we're seeing a lot of accidents there, are we?
I have not heard it.
And the question is where, of course. I assume we're talking Cypress Point Parkway, you know, the Walmart turn, that type of stuff.
I imagine so. Question on trucks. How many of our employees take their trucks home? Why are there so many trucks at a construction site? Do you put four guys in one truck, and three of them sit around while the fourth guy finishes his work, or do you send four guys in four trucks so that some of them can? You want to just comment on the truck issue, Mr. Landon?
Yes, you know, once again, we look at this very hard because we know it's an issue out in the community and have actually decreased our fleet as we talked about earlier. But the fact of it is, is if you have an inspector, you know, there's going to be one person in that vehicle, hopefully, usually, unless they're doing some cross-training or something, because you don't want to send two inspectors out to do one job. The actual cost of the employee is a lot more than the cost of that vehicle. Oftentimes, when you have a job, you have different functions, and you may have multiple pickups. They don't all stay there at the same time, and so there's a variety of reasons why you might do that, have the multiple trucks there. Each situation is different. I think, from what I've seen, our departments manage it very well. The take-home vehicles, the only vehicles that go home, very, very few, are those that are on call, primarily the utility, which almost every night, they get a call out, and so there's that, do you go to the shop, get in your truck, and then go out to it, or do you just get into your truck at home and then go directly to the call? But it would, those vehicles, those city vehicles you see parked in anybody's residence overnight are on call and go directly from the house to the call. Other than that, we do not have employees take vehicles home.
Okay.
And I want to stress, the idea of personal use, they are not allowed to use them for personal use whatsoever. So, it's not a matter of, you know, it's being their own personal vehicle use type situation.
There was a question about a sidewalk on Beltier, Whiteview, eastbound.
What, Whiteview eastbound? That contract has been let. It's under design. It's designed, built. I don't have a timeframe, but we can get Mr. McCarthy a timeline. But it's one of those stimulus grants that we received. It actually, the Whiteview Trail will go from the, I forget the name of the street at the very eastern end, close to I-95. It will go from that street that connects with Whiteview at the very eastern end, all the way to White Mill. And then it will go north on White Mill up to Pine Lakes Trail, so that all those will get connected, is what is in the plan for that.
Pritchard.
Okay. Pritchard. So, that is, it's under design now. It amounts to, the contract's been let.
There were questions slash comments about the possibly proposed half-cent sales tax for economic development. There is a meeting, an intergovernmental meeting, on January 31st. My understanding of the format of that meeting is that each of the cities that have an economic development plan will be asked to give a 10-minute presentation on what their vision is. There will be discussion from Enterprise Flagler, and I believe the Chamber of Commerce, on their vision on economic development. And then I believe there will be a discussion of the several economic development plans that have been proposed. The city has one. I think the county administrator has one. Commissioner Holland has one, and probably one or more of the other commissioners have one, and we may have some other versions. But in a nutshell, there's a discussion about raising taxes, raising the sales tax, in order to generate money to spend on economic development. And that's one of those questions that nobody wants to raise taxes, but everybody wants to. Many want to see economic development. There are some folks who say, we've got enough. We don't need anything. I don't need any more jobs. Don't need any more businesses. Just leave me alone. So, turn out on the 31st, and then stay tuned for further developments. Mr. Landon, the dog park, the no-smoking, the city council, several years ago, basically said that any area where there is restricted activity, fenced in, demarked, delineated, will be no-smoking areas. If you have no choice, then it's going to be no-smoking. The rest of the park is smoking. But now we come to the condition of the dog park, and you and I have discussed this. I brought this up at the workshop. I understand we have a park master plan. I will say again that I am very, very skeptical that we will have the funds to implement that plan any time in the near future. And because the dog park is a single-function facility, and because it's fenced in and delineated, if you've got a dog, you're going to be in there. And we've had testimony that it does get extensive use, and therefore, there's wear and tear. And I will reiterate that I would like to see us do something to improve conditions there in a fashion that won't have to be torn out as if and when Holland Park is rejuvenated, rebuilt, rehabilitated. Beyond that, I mean...
Yes. If I could maybe give people in the audience an update, Holland Park is old and tired and doesn't meet many of the standards of today, not just ADA standards, but others, and not just the dog park, our playgrounds and other features out there. And that's why it's on the schedule to be renovated, a major renovation, to bring it up to standards. And I could just give you an example of the grass. One of the reasons why we have such a difficult time growing the grass is because the well we have out there is high content of salt. So, you plant or lay sod and water heavy with our well water, we just go ahead and kill it. So, those are why, it really needs some major renovations. And the challenge, obviously, is everybody recalls that we held the millage rate constant this year. And one of the ways we held the millage rate constant was we didn't place any of the property tax, millage or property tax dollars into our capital improvement fund. And that was a decision this year to keep the taxes down. Well, it's that fund that is used to make Holland Park renovation, so it was one of those projects that got delayed. With all that said, city council has, you know, as the mayor indicated, has instructed us to come up with a kind of a short-term plan to do something incrementally, do something to make some improvements out there, because it is heavily used, it is a very popular park, and it does need to be upgraded. And so, we are working on, what can we do now within the limited funds we have? Hopefully, things that we don't have to tear out in the future, as the mayor indicated. I would ask our Parks and Recreation Directors in the back, Luanne, I would ask if you could give your list to Luanne, and we could contact you and work with people out there as far as, you know, some of the things we can do to try to make it better and more pleasant experience for everybody. There's some things you have on your list that would be pretty easy and pretty inexpensive, and there's no reason why we can't do it. So, if we can work with a core group of dog park users, that would be helpful. So, if you get together with Luanne, see what we can do to help. In the meantime, we'll work on more of those extensive plans to hopefully get started this spring on making some improvements out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a source of irrigation out there?
It's, I've been told it's a well currently.
Before you move on. Mr. Lewis?
On the pooping, scooping, or whatever it is...
Okay.
We have, we have something that says that you must go behind your pet and scoop up their, whatever they let out. But it's not enforceable. So, if it's not enforceable, why keep it on the books?
Is that a rhetorical question, or is that a...
That's a question to the council.
For myself, you keep it on the books because that's what people should do and are supposed to do.
That's right.
There are many ordinances, there are many laws, there are many regulations where you have to depend on the virtue of the resident to obey.
Then we have the residents coming up saying, you say we should scoop, and we don't enforce it. So, why have that discussion?
Because you should scoop.
Well, basically, somebody has to witness it and file a complaint. You have to be identified. Same as speeding.
Yeah.
You can speed all day long until one of the deputies see you speeding, and you get a ticket. But other than that...
That's enforceable.
It's not, yeah, but if somebody sees the dog poop not being scooped, then that's enforceable if you've got an eyewitness. Same as speeding ticket.
Only when, only when one of our own code enforcement or animal control officers are there to witness the event and try to enforce it. Citizens trying to enforce it on other citizens is not exactly what we're looking for.
Right.
Okay. This brings us to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Let's start with Mr. Moreland.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Lewis?
I pass.
Any additional words or wisdom? Mrs. DiStefano?
No. My only comment would be that hopefully, the staff and Mr. Landon can make some improvements in the dog park, because I also have gotten phone calls. And hopefully, we can do some, some of the improvements until we can get some money to do what we want to do. That's it.
Mr. Meeker?
No, sir.
And I have nothing to add. So, discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
I hate to break it, but yes.
I knew it. I knew it.
No, just good, good things. You know, first of all, a little plug for our Facebook page. Been very pleased. Got a lot of positive responses and very impressed with our team, who has not just put up events and that type of thing, but also little tidbits about its good whale-watching time and about our eagles in town right now, and some of those other kind of nice, fun tips, so it's...
How many friends do we have?
We're over 300 now.
Oh, we're becoming a friend.
Yes, yes. Also, you'll find on there a couple of events coming up. Once again, very consistent with that outdoor theme and trying to bring in people from out of town to enjoy the great outdoors we have here in Palm Coast, but also spend their money. This Sunday at 8:00 a.m., I think they're a little crazy to want to run 13 miles, but the half marathon is this Sunday. It starts at the Marina there on Palm Harbor, so that should bring in a number of runners over the weekend. Also, next week, our professional, futures professional tennis tournament starts. This is something we started last year, and it, I think it's about a week and a half-long event, you know, as they go through the qualifiers and the semifinals, and then eventually the finals. But that's another event that will bring in dozens of people from out of town. I watched last year, and it's worthwhile going to take a look at this very young talent. It's rather amazing difference between a hacker, if you will, is that what they call it? No, I guess that's golf. Nice and professional.
Full arcade, messes with computers, but...
Speaking of, speaking of...
So, if hacker is golf, then a swacker is a tennis...
Swacker.
I think I'm going to move on. I'm getting out of my knowledge base here. Speaking of golf, though, Kemper has landed two professional golf tournaments this year. One of them is a regional, and the other one is, regional meaning kind of, they call it the Tri-County Invitational. And the other one is a Southeast Regional-type tournament.
Is that a seniors-based tournament, or up-and-coming players tournament?
I'm not going to know the details, but it is on the website, and, you know, we are getting some nice, once again, positive exposure, but also having these individuals come into town to play golf, spend a little money, stay at our hotels. It's all part of that, trying to support our local, local businesses. So, a lot of positive, fun things going on. This is kind of a busy time of year for those. We've recently met with a couple of our soccer associations, lacrosse people, actually, our local gymnastics club is talking about bringing a meet to town and...
And use the soccer fields? Heavens, no.
No, no. This would be more of a gymnasium-type thing. So, all sorts of good things in that arena. That's something we've been trying to promote, and it's really taken off, so... Mayor, that's all I have for today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lewis?
One thing that perhaps you might want to comment on is the roper. I know we had the, we had that joyride, we'll call it, and the follow-up of that was the roper, what, the motocross or something like that?
The BMX track?
BMX, yeah.
I didn't hear the question.
Is there any follow-up?
The, you know, this is one that, actually, I met with the developer of Palm Coast Park, and they're very interested in trying to get some activity out there in Palm Coast Park on US-1, and they're interested in contributing some dollars to it. You know, there are no public dollars for this, as we've talked about, and, but it does look like there is some private interest to possibly fund the construction of a BMX track. Still very preliminary at this point, but obviously, if we have private interests that are interested in investing in Palm Coast, particularly a youth activity that gets the kids off the street and very active, we will be helping, see if we can't help make that happen. The developer's talking about, you know, providing the land. There's parkland out there and actually helping with the infrastructure and the grading and the permitting and all that. So, it's, if the private sector can work those things out, we'll continue to help facilitate those and eventually bring something back to city council if they can put together a plan. We do not have dollars set aside for this, so I've made it very clear that it's not one of those things that has been in our five-year plan, and we can just add to the top. But if they come up with the dollars, we'll help them, is what the game plan is at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, I can do it, Mr. Mayor. I thought you were going to take advantage of one of your favorite puns for this one, that you were all pooped and ready to go home.
I'll motion to adjourn the meeting. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your participation.